I'm going to wrap up. Thank you, Barb. What I'm saying is, the thing we must focus on right now is not taking that $600,500 to fortify the 4th precinct. We need to take that $600,500 and place it in a community policing plan. We don't need MPD in our neighborhoods. The community can police themselves.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seth Levitt, followed by Fred Moser. Mr. Levitt?
Hello, my name is Seth Levitt. I live at 3607 21st Avenue South. I'm in the 13th Ward. This is, I've lived in Minneapolis for about 40, 45 years. This is the second time I've come to a city council meeting. I'm not well-versed in how the council works, but I feel I want to make a comment. I have been informed that there somehow or other, some money has been found to fortify the 4th precinct. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I've been told. I don't know how to find out that information. It's not on any of these papers. But if that is the case, I don't think that the 4th precinct is in any danger, and I don't think it needs fortification. It wasn't in danger a month and a half ago. It's not in danger now. If that $600,500 is floating around and it needs a place to go, I think there are a lot of people in this community who could give you some good ideas on better ways to spend $600,500 than fortifying the police station. Thank you.
Fred Moser, followed by Gillette West.
Good evening, folks. My name is Fred Moser. I live at 400 North First Street, Minneapolis. It's a privilege to speak. I just wanted to say that I don't, I oppose my property tax increase, but I really don't have any choice if I want to live here. But that's really not the reason why I'm here, is I want to bring up the whole idea of these taxes and status for these sports stadiums. Now, somewhere along the line, someone in here knows about what's going on, when the original decision was made to build the Viking Stadium without a referendum. And I fought that tooth and nail with Klobuchar and Franken and Lisa. And obviously, it went through, so I started asking some questions. I haven't lived in this country in 13 years. And what I want you folks to do tonight, when you go home, and you take the cat out of the Christmas tree, or do whatever you do, you put the kids to bed, I want you to think about your core values, because you deal with people, you deal with data, you deal with equipment. But the number one thing is people. And the decisions that you make on a daily basis affect people. I don't care if you're volunteer, if you're paid. What do you think about that? Because those are core values, and that's given in the military. Okay? Every one of you, I want you to think about that when you go home. Because the feelings that I'm getting right now from being an outsider is, is I have this aura of incompetence, and it's all knee-jerk. And really, the people that you're hurting, you're not hurting me. And you're not hurting yourselves, because you're going to be gone. I'll be gone. You're hurting your children.
Gillette West, followed by Alexis Penny.
Hi, my name is Gillette West. I live at 3842 21st Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Betsy Hodges, and thank you to the council for hearing us this evening. I'd like to speak out in opposition of the fortification of the 4th precinct. I think there are better places to spend our money. One of the places that we could spend that is by either investing it directly into the people of North Minneapolis, or even investing it in a redesign of this room, so that we could have a conversation that was on equal ground between everybody that is present. The design of this room is ancient in and of itself, as it elevates the members of the city council in a physical position above the people in the audience who are seated at a position below. We need a larger room here, and we need a real conversation where we don't come and speak to people at a microphone anymore. This doesn't work, and it's caused the situation that we are currently in. Everyone on that side is in a position above, and we need to live in an equal society. Symbols matter. One of the symbols that exists is the 4th precinct building, and it exists as a symbol of superiority and power over the people of that neighborhood. And it's time that they came down to an equal level. It's not fair. People, white people need to acknowledge their position of privilege and step back to allow the people in that community to speak for themselves, because they're quite capable of doing that. They're capable of policing their own neighborhoods. They're capable of building their own neighborhoods, and we have to assist them in doing so. So I'd like to start with taking that money and giving it to the people of North Minneapolis, not to the 4th precinct, not to the, you know, police union. I mean, if you don't get real here, we're not going to have a community anymore. This community is going to turn inside out and just rip itself apart. And it's not that black people or people of color are going to tear the community apart. It's the white people that are causing this. Let's get that straight right now. Thank you very much.
Alexis Penny, followed by Marcus Mills, please. Mr. Penny?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Alexis Penny, 2430 Logan Avenue North. All right. So, everybody's here for, you know why. But I also wanted to say, thank you guys so much for putting the $10 million into the Affordable Housing Trust. That was legitimate. I also wanted to say that I respect people wanting to fund the Upper Harbor Terminal, but I still don't think taking away neighborhood money is the way to do that. And obviously, I don't think presenting this money to the police department is a good use of our money either. In fact, I'm going to say something that I may regret, but I'm going to say it nonetheless, which is I feel like this policy is a capitulation to the status quo in simply not listening or hearing the needs of community members. People spoke very eloquently before me, so I probably don't need to, because they've done it. They've done it so well. But what I want to see in my community is something that my friend Kendra Call said to me. I want to see, I would like to see a peace, prosperity, and poverty package. And that basically means investing in economic justice in North Minneapolis, and connecting us and providing access. You know, I'm a big advocate for bicycle infrastructure, but in addition to that, I want to see us tackle things like soil, water, and air quality in North Minneapolis. I don't want to see industry on my river, and I want to see us take seriously development in North Minneapolis. I don't want to see gaps taking place with respect to any type of network or system or development. I want to see it happen now, not 30 years from now.
Marcus Mills, followed by Roxanne O'Brien.
My name is Marcus Mills. I live in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood at 309 Sixth Street Southeast. I have a few remarks. I'm an outreach and inclusion officer for the Democratic Party here in Minnesota. So it should come as no surprise that democracy and inclusion are quite important to me. I'm on the board of my neighborhood association. I maintain amenable relationships with a number of my city's council. And this amendment to darken our streets and strengthen those that our recent decisions and recent horrors dictate most need watching caught me off guard and came to my consciousness mere hours ago. I come to speak here unprepared, but I don't feel so bad since, as I understand it, many on this body were as in the dark as I was. I was going to come here tonight anyway to thank this body for its decision to support our mayor and our clean energy partnership, but now I must express my disappointment. The people need help. They need support, responsiveness, fairness, trust, and courage from their leaders. Not secrecy. Not fear.
Thank you. Roxanne O'Brien, followed by Patlyn Lawrence.
Okay. My name is Roxanne O'Brien, and you guys know me well. You actually elected me to be on your CAC group. I'm also a Bush Fellow and a mother of three children, and I've lived in Minneapolis almost all my life. I wanted to basically say, I am in opposition of the way that you guys are forming this budget, especially for giving more money to people who really don't deserve it right now. Again, I'm going to use my time to call action to the public right now. There's a new collaboration out called the Department of Public Work, and it is a collective centering collaboration and action through the creation of culture, using art to examine domination. And I would like to amplify this call to action, because you guys can't seem to get it together in the city. Did you know that you are entitled to know what your elected officials say in the course of their work? Even about you and your neighbors, it's called a data practices request. Join us as we hold the city accountable for its botched handling of the 4th precinct shutdown and make them hand over critical data. There is power in numbers. The more of us that submit our data request forms, the harder it will be for the city to ignore us. They should know and will know that people are watching. You will be able to fill out your data practice request form on the spot at City Hall. We will collect copies for you or print it out and bring it in, filled out. We're going to do this 9:00 AM this Friday, the 11th, on the third floor at the city clerk's office, room 304. I just want to make it clear that we are coming.
Patlyn Lawrence, followed by Tyrone Williams. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Patlyn Lawrence, 36 South 9th Street. And I just want to speak in opposition to the funding to fortify the 4th precinct. I think that it was a horrible thing that you guys allowed to happen last week. It really showed how un-American our political figures have become in our society, when we have people who are exercising their constitutional rights, out there voicing their dissent and protest, or then taken away like this was Nazi Germany or some place where they don't value human rights. And that's something that this council, we really need to look at, valuing the human rights of all of the citizens in the city of Minneapolis. That additional money, just like others have said, could go to many other things. But I think my recommendation to you all would be to have a conversation with the community over there in North Minneapolis. Getting people together, don't be afraid of the community. I know, you know, one person commented about the structure and how things are set, and that's kind of a wall. It's like a block. It's kind of where you're setting up, where you're the authority figures. But your power and authority comes from us, the people. That's where it comes from. It doesn't come from you to us. It comes from us to you. So come to us and talk to us in the community, and find out what are the real issues that are going on, and how you really can solve it, and then implement what you hear. So often, you do have listening sessions, but you never implement the recommendations that people from the community give. And that's what needs to be done. That's where you're going to see the change. Because I'm going to tell you, people are fed up with their public officials. And, you know, things in this country, they're getting to a violent place. And, you know, you know, I would be, if I was on your end, on your side, I would definitely be listening to the community and be concerned for my safety and well-being, because there are people who, once they get sick and tired, they're sick and tired, and you never know what people will do when they feel like they have no other options. And so it's my recommendation to you that you listen to the community, that you get people together, hold a convention, hold some kind of session where you can hear, let people air their vent, vent, air their angers. You know, I served as a board chair of the council. The council and Black Minnesotans, people came to us all the time and vented and yelled and ranted and raved. You don't like it, but you know what? If you're in that position, you have to take it. That's what you signed up for. So that's what you should do. Go talk to the community and make that change that they want to see. Thank you.
Tyrone Williamson, I apologize. I haven't been calling people's number. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Williams, your number 16. Number 17 is Lee Samuelson. So, Mr. Williams?
Hello, Tyrone Williams, 701 Elwood Avenue North, Minneapolis. A longtime, fourth-generation resident, community activist, and so on. I'm in opposition of the budget you guys are pursuing today, because it just doesn't make any sense. I didn't come up here with any statistics or any printouts. I'm talking directly from the heart, as I looked into some of you guys' eyes and see how you, whatever you're doing behind your little desks back there, whatever. I just want to say this. It is crazy that you guys do not care about black people in the city of Minneapolis. You guys do not care. It's very clear. Yeah, take the $600,000 and go put it over in your community. Go put it somewhere else, because we don't want it there. I'm in complete opposition for it. And it's sad to see that certain people that were there, were supposed to be there. Mr. Gang, Ms. Hodges, after certain organizations from the North Side community, single-handedly got you in. And we still held your back on the whole Pointe Gate thing and all that, so we ain't going to get into that. But it's sad that I look at you guys and really know that you guys don't care. You don't care about black people. And if you want to reinforce that precinct, you'll have another Ferguson. You'll have another Baltimore. Are you ready for that? Are you ready for that? It costs you guys $750,000 to remove us for what, three hours? How long did it take to remove us? Three hours? Great job. Where'd that money come from? Put the money back into the community. Mayor, if you had a half-black son, how would the police treat him? If he lived in North Minneapolis and dribbled his basketball down Broadway with his friends, how would they treat him? Think about that. Think about that. All of you guys.
Lee Samuelson, number 17, followed by Ernold Landrum, number 18, please. Mr. Samuelson?
Address?
Yes.
Yeah, 2836 18th Avenue South, Ward 9. Yeah, President Johnson, yeah, I do trust the mayor's budget crafting expertise, and I'm glad to see the LED streetlight funding as part of the budget, since burnt-out streetlights are a specific safety concern for my neighborhood organization. And Xcel Energy has already put forth a significant investment proposal. So it's great to see the city reciprocate. I'm also glad to see the multilingual communications in the budget, and would like to reiterate that the Clean Energy Partnership is a good start, and it's ongoing work is important. And I did find it a bit difficult to find information about any intended amendments brought forth tonight, which is my main concern. And I'm hoping that they're not like any plans to introduce major changes to the budget after all opportunity for a public weigh-in has elapsed, since those are things that should have been introduced at a previous budget markup hearing. Though I have no proof that this might be happening, I find it inappropriate for elected officials to keep amendments secret from the public and other council members. And we should at least have the opportunity to weigh in, or we should have the opportunity to organize the community to weigh in on specific plans. Overall, a budget is a moral document where both the content and process have serious moral implications. And a vote in favor of a surprise last-minute budget amendments anticipated to be unpopular would be a vote against transparency in the democratic process. I do want the municipal government to have the funding that it needs to meet the city's climate action plan goals and racial equity goals, because I look up to the city level of government to provide much-needed political leadership on those priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 18, Ernold Landrum, and number 19, Ashley Sartorius.
I'm actually going to be speaking for number 18. My name is Siobhan L. Johnson. Good evening. I first like to say that I am addressing the issues with the breach and the betrayal between the community, the MPD, and elected officials, that they are supposed to be paid to protect and serve. Being a product of North Minneapolis, having dedicated all my life, my education, and my professional experiences to creating a space of equity and inclusion for all the inhabitants of Minneapolis, specifically for those in North Minneapolis. We do not need more fences. We need more bridges to create access for the many inhabitants of North Minneapolis. I was one of the women who was forcefully and aggressively removed from the vestibule with my students, and that still has not been properly addressed. And multiple lies were said in CNN and WCCO regarding my behavior there that day. I really would hope that you are going to invest, if you're going to invest anything, invest in people like me. Invest in people who come from this community and come back to this community and who believe in this community. We are worth it. We do not need more fences. We need bridges, and you have the power to do so, and we are here to hold you accountable to that. Thank you.
Ashley Sartorius, number 19, and 20 is Andy Tim, it looks like.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashley Sartorius. Many brilliant people have already spoken here today and shared a lot of our community wisdom, so I'll try not to reiterate their amazing points. I want to remind you that the people who have spoken and the people who have filled this room represent hundreds and thousands of us who have voted you into your positions here. And those of us who could make it here today are those of us who could come to this last-minute surprise $600,000 jab, dollar jab at community justice. So we might be, just like multiply this by, if the word had gotten out, and if people didn't have jobs, and if people didn't have families, and if people could just spend all their time here talking to you about what we do want and what we don't want. I want you to hear me when I tell you that I am tired, that we are tired. I've been taking off work and sleep. We've been taking off time with our families. We've been taking off self-help, all of this stuff to clean up the trauma and crimes against humanity that officers at the 4th precinct perpetrated on peaceful protesters as they were engaged in their First Amendment right to peaceful assembly. Many of us have elected many of you on the platform, your platform of equity. This is our money that we have entrusted to you, not to buy weapons against us, but to help our communities thrive. I'm asking you to use my money, to use our money, to do the equity work that you have pledged to do, so that I and the rest of us here can finally go back to work, can go back to sleeping, can go back to strengthening the community in whatever ways we are good at, instead of wasting our time cleaning up the mess of racism and oppression. Thank you.
Number 20, Andy Tim?
Oh, yeah, he gave me a spot, number 20.
All right. Your name, please, and address?
My name is Michael McDowell with Black Lives Matter, Minneapolis.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your address.
Swag squad.
Sir? Sir?
My name is Michael McDowell with Black Lives Matter, Minneapolis.
Your address, please.
Oh, it's 3611th Avenue South.
Thank you.
Cool. So, first off, I want to-
So are you speaking for Mr. Tim? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes. He gave me a spot. So, first off, I just want to say, I want to commend Lisa Bender, Rock With You, Alondra Condon, Cam Gordon, um... Elizabeth Glidden. That's about it. But anyways, I don't know what y'all are doing. Y'all are not serving the people like the folks who put you in office, like especially Betsy, the ones who threw down, who did countless hours knocking on the doors for you, myself, a black Minneapolis or Minneapolitis, whatever the hell you want to call it. You know, a person who was on the doors for you, threw down for you. You aren't creating policies and moving in a way that's, you know, for me or people who look like me, so I just don't get it. And in Minnesota, we're like second to the nation when it comes to racial disparities, but you all are spending money to fortify a police precinct? So, you know, black people, you'd say we're at the bottom of healthcare, housing, employment, but you're not addressing any of these issues. Any of these issues. You're worried about landscaping. You're worried about police safety. Why are we worried about police safety when they're supposed to be protecting us? They're supposed to be protecting us, so what narrative is that creating? We need to protect the police. We need to fortify the police. What is that going to do? Nothing. And so I just want to say that a lot of y'all are not going to be sitting in these seats pretty soon. Like, you're going to get dethroned because you're not for the people. And we can reiterate what Tyrone said, what Kanye said, like, you know, like, this council and a lot of y'all do not care about black people, and you're not showing it. There's been no statements about Black Lives Matter. It hasn't been in your steps. So the folks who put you in office are going to dethrone you, because we're tired of this stuff. Like, seriously. So that's all I got to say. So.
Next, we have number 21, King Demetrius Pendleton, Pendleton, I think, and then number 22, Claudio Rivera. Mr. Pendleton? Is he here? Why don't we go to Mr. Rivera, then? And if Mr. Pendleton comes in, he can speak next. Mr. Rivera?
Hi, my name is Claudio Rivera. I'm at 3222 Dupont Avenue North, here for the second time again. I thank you. Earlier, there was the talk about the initiative that would, it's basically, I think $300,000 or so is going to fund this training that is supposed to improve our policing, but as I said earlier, and it's not going to cut it. One day of implicit bias training is not going to cut it. It takes a lot longer to undo the white supremacy that is built into this system. So I want to, if it's not clear, I oppose the renovations at the 4th precinct as it was put by the press release that was put out two hours ago. So I want to talk about democracy, as other people have touched on. That's not democracy. You don't put a surprise amendment two hours before a public hearing. And in fact, if I had not been paying attention to social media, there's no way I would have known. Right? So I think, I honestly feel like you guys were counting on people not knowing, because then this hearing would not have been able to talk about that, and it would have just gotten passed, and $600,000 to do this thing. That's not democracy. And neither is holding a secret public meeting with very short notice, with hand-selected constituents, to give the media the appearance that people were in support of closing the 4th precinct shutdown. Right? Like, when I talk to the community, when I go to community meetings, I don't see what I saw on TV that day or at that press conferences. Like, those are very different-looking press conferences, if you know what I'm saying. Like, the community has spoken. The community is very clear. They did not want the precinct shut down. They wanted justice for tomorrow, still do. And you guys have got to start listening to the real people that are here also, and not just the secret, the ones at the secret meetings.
Can you wrap up, please?
That's all I've got to say. Black Lives Matter, and I hope they matter to you.
Next, number 23, Jeremiah Bay, and then number 24, Nikima Levy-Pounds. Mr. Bay? Is he here? I thought I saw him before. Ms. Nikima Levy-Pounds, oh, here's Mr. Bay. Okay.
So I was outside doing some work. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Cool, cool. I'm actually not so much trying to address the council-
Would you give your name and address?
My name is Jeremiah Ellison, and I live at 3638 11th Avenue South. But I was born and raised in North Minneapolis. Still work over in North Minneapolis. And so I have some concerns that aren't necessarily for the council specifically, so I'm going to turn around. I think that, how's everyone doing? I think that one of the things that bothers me about what's happening tonight is that I'm like almost concerned. There's so much like, is that the adding of the 4th precinct thing that they're trying to do tonight is, to me, seems like a red herring. It's completely inappropriate. It's antagonistic to the community. And like, they're purely doing that to hide all of the other nefarious things that I think are going to be on the chopping block tonight. So I want, like, I think that we need to keep an eye on this past tonight. We need to keep an eye on this tonight. We need to keep an eye on this tonight, because, you know, to me, it's unacceptable. I think I know a lot of the people personally, or have met a lot of people personally on the council. And one of the things that I feel like I have learned is that, as much as a nice smile and a nice handshake is, somebody will shake your hand, kiss your baby, and slit your throat at the same time. And so, on an interpersonal level, I hope everybody on the council well, in health and life, all of that. But we have got to start to unmask some of the things that they're putting up in front of us. I think that this 4th Precinct BS that they're trying to shove down our throats, that they're trying, is a wall. I mean, it's a terrible thing in and of itself, but it's also a wall to hide everything else that I think that they're putting out, that they're going to be putting forth. And the fact that they're going to hold a hearing based on, basically conjecture, when we don't even know what they've cut yet, what they have in store for us yet. And so, that's really all I've got to say. I want us all to keep a close eye on what actually happens at this meeting tomorrow, behind closed doors. What do they actually have in store for the city? Are they actually going to try to shove this thing down our throats or not? Because tonight feels like a ruse, and I don't like being played, especially by my elected officials. So, thank you.
Number 24, Nikima Levy-Pounds.
Good evening, my name is...
Excuse me a second. And then, number 25 is Raisha Williams. Next, Ms. Levy-Pounds. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nikima Levy-Pounds. I live at 2901 Lindell Avenue North, so I am a proud North Side resident. I am also, and I'm in your ward, Lon. I am here tonight. I'm the president of the Minneapolis NAACP, although I'm not speaking in that capacity, because I've had elected officials and other so-called...